Well, it is five o'clock and we have a quorum present and in fact, all the members that we expect to attend are here. So I will call the meeting to order. The first item of business is an approval of the July 27th, 2023 board meeting agenda, the agenda before you. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
By DJ, second by Hannah. Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is public discussion. I see any members of the public have joined us. On to the FY23 strategic plan review. So this is the accomplishments under the previous strategic plan. Alsworth, do you have anything you'd like to share?
So this is to serve our wrap up document. Most of it, much of it has been in travel group before in our regular updates. It's kind of brings it together. There are some things that we don't have numbers with yet. So there are a few that have sort of a value attached to them that we don't have a synthesizing base to report on yet. But it does kind of tell the bulk of, of sort of how we address those. The global setup for the last three years. I know it's a very much that's in my memo. There's a lot of information. I'm happy to answer questions if folks have them. Otherwise, I think it just provides an overview of what that looks like.
That was my only concern question was that percentage is it's like, that's all. Do you know when you'd expect to have all that together?
Anything related to expend a period probably by next month? If not, then certainly by the following. It just sort of depends when that gets wrapped up. In comparison to when the packing has to be put together. So I would guess next month for most of the room.
That's all I'd be looking for is just as soon as they're available. And the quantifiable ones, those are really the ones I care about is these two there.
In the discussion of the library use policy, I just have a question about the internal conduct database. What is that and where is it? And?
That's a great question. We have a internal database that's part of our big staff get to it through our internet. And it's basically a shared reporting tool. So when there is an incident, you're able to put in the person involved, what happened. We import a photo from the cameras in the library. And then that can be linked to suspension details or a ban as it's labeled in the system. The, the real value is that if a staff is on one desk and an incident happens somewhere else, they still get the information. And we can add sort of to the story of, of an individual patron or incident as it happens.
Who, who has access to it?
All staff have access to it and that it's, it's essentially just a closed tool for that. We've had a few conversations with legal in the fairly recent history about if it is requested by a patron. So if somebody says, can I have access to my own record? And we've just dealt with those individually about what, what that is. I mean, recently there were some changes made to it. It has always been able to generate an email to everybody with an update on the incident. So you get an email saying, you know, incident number, whatever, and then give you the update. But there's been some changes made somehow. Staff could actually use the internal recording to generate an outward facing documents they could print off from there. That gives a warning based on the incident that was entered. It's a cool drama.
What does auditing look like? So for example, what I'm thinking of is similarly to if someone had, has access to police records and you could query and say, or, or health records. Something like that where he's like, well, hey, I just saw Alsworth at the hospital yesterday. I'm gonna see why he was here, that kind of thing. My worry is someone, because we have it open to all staff, and I think that's fine to have it open to all staff to be sure. But the concern is, how do we close the loop on abuse there and have an audit trail of who's looking at what, when? That would be my, my ideal situation, but I don't know if that's practical or reasonable.
I would say right now we don't have, I mean, we wouldn't be able to say who was looking at it from where. I would say it's covered in staff orientation and sort of treated like access to library records would be that. Many staff have access to things that we did as a mission for to close up states private. And I can't recall an issue with information misuse. I think if that happened, we would treat it very seriously. And that's similar to what we try to navigate, you know, when there's a request for. If, if somebody wanted to access their own or their dependents or their whatever. Relation kind of record. And right now, I also don't think that there's any kind of automatic timeout. We can delete things, but they stay there until we do that, right?
I'm sorry, this, we hit a vein on what I work in, so I'm just super curious. Do we, I know that, so we don't have a, a record expiration in that system. Do we have a data retention policy?
There is, it doesn't cover, I mean. Those are not so tight. Relation, but we do have data retention. Well, it's not a policy so much as a list of all the different types of personal information that we store and how long it's stored. And that's probably what that'll do. So that, I'm sure there is an entry for that.
Okay.
That's not quite the same thing as a policy, but it's the details.
If the shoe fits.
Yeah, yeah. It details all the different.
That's fine.
That'll be on the privacy.
It's currently in the.
Yeah, I've seen very similar words like you definitely and then if well, if we enact a policy of, you know, three years, then we don't even have to. We're not under any requirement to maintain that data moving forward. And that kind of removes us from responsibility in certain situations, but it can be a strategic, anyway. Sorry, I'm going off. Thank you.
Now brought into like, oh, no, that's, or somebody might still be in there, but also.
They passed. Yeah. I appreciate the indulgence on the deep dive.
I wondered about, I know one of the, I don't know if I would say it's a theme of the strategic plan, but something that was important in it was the idea of. Strengthening assessment and evaluation programs and such. And so I, I think right near the beginning, there've been a lot of surveys and other ways. I was wondering if you could provide an example of something that we learned by collecting those information resulted in an action? Or something was learned in general?
I mean, I would say just as a very practical outcome from surveys related to reopening after COVID. There was concern about losing both browsing abilities, but also abilities to have that real. One-on-one curation of reading lists and things like that. And that led to the development of. Especially, what's that called? What's that web tool called? Just for you?
Yeah.
Staff picks just for you. It is a, an online system where you can enter your information and then a librarian works with that to either put things on hold for you or even your suggestions, things like that. So there are some really like practical nuts and bolts things that came out of it.
That's a great example.
But I would also say some of like the staff committees that we put together to work on communication or the strat plan design and things like that. Came out of some of the internal work about.
Other questions about the FY23 strategic plan review?
I just one, one more thing. This has to do with the. What am I thinking of? The online books that people are checking out. Yes, I mean, they are a big problem with, with having to, to stretch the budget in order to. And one of the things, it says that there are stricter terms have been initiated or employed to, to work on expiring titles. But it doesn't say, what are the, what's that mean stricter terms? This is on page 15.
Where the bottom is?
Oh, um, so I, because of budget constraints and the increased use, I think that they adjusted like the ratio of. If it's checked out a certain number of times, when to get repurchased, or if it was used eight times in a year and that, that. Access expires per the contract with the vendor, do we automatically do order or not? So in the, before some of the vendor changes and before some of the service changes, those were just broader and we could. We could more generously order, sort of replace automatically. And this just tightened up those, how we do that work.
So it's something that's not being used a good deal and is going to expire. Uh, there's a, a motion not to renew it.
Yes.
That seems sensible.
Yeah.
And the other thing in the same thing, it's, it's clear other libraries are struggling with this question. And nobody's come up with any even list of best practices, much less a solution to it. And I wonder if that's, is that an initiative that we ought to try to take as a library? Or, or have, do we have enough on our plate already without trying to address that ourselves?
Specifically for ebooks, you're thinking?
Yeah.
I think that there, as COVID started, there was some movement here. I mean, Anne Mangano's been fairly involved in the conversation. But I do think it sort of shifted to, to a different level of urgency as other things came up. I. Somebody needs to take it on.
I agree with me. I mean, it may not be, I mean, other people are struggling with it, but so it, and it's a big question. So I, but it just occurred to me that we, we and everybody else were fumbling around trying to figure out what to do about this.
And Sam, where is that? Concerned with representative in Northwest Iowa working need to draft a ebooks bill. Some of the ones we've seen in Massachusetts, we are looking for folks interested in joining that. Right? It would begin the conversation.
That's okay.
It's on my brain kind of tomorrow and I'm like, so I'm married.
And maybe a good step would be to ask Anne in her next report to maybe outline sort of what that. National level conversation looks like right now, and that would at least keep us all on the same page.
So Sharon, that's it.
I love it. This one is a Bollmar's Public Library project. I'm pretty lucky to know that.
Trying to remember what movie stars from Bollmar's, Rost. Everybody.
Right. Anything else on the strategic plan? Next item on the agenda is the Board of Trustees annual report. This is a report that goes to the city, tells, tells them what we've been up to, what we plan to be up to. Hopefully the staff drafts something for us every year as we look at it and make suggestions. So I'll open the floor for suggestions. If any, on the annual report.
And just to, to help with the process, we intentionally bring this to the board earlier than it is required by the city. And so we have, there's plenty of time to bring us back to multiple meetings and some years that happens and some years it doesn't. So if people want to talk more or, or otherwise ask us to make edits, there's plenty of time for that.
I love the intentionality of the bird fossil.
Yeah. You know, like that process and, and to pick what resumes or replaces.
I feel present company is often guilty of being too humble and so I'm glad that you're calling those things out.
Yeah, I know you invited us to, you know, perhaps shorten it. Particularly under accomplishments, I feel pretty, those are all things we did.
Lex.
The word of library boards has changed a lot and I think it's great to.
To add the Dax to the umbrella.
As it changes.
That your other phone, that one?
Yeah, bro.
Someone else is. I guess. Okay. I was like, I hear more buzzing. Sorry.
Yeah, it can't all stay there. We can even add to it. It's really the board's document.
When was our statement on intellectual freedom?
I think that was on this document for last fiscal year.
So it was, okay.
The data is on the website.
We can double check. It's just, I was just on that page. Let's see. Intellectual freedom was February 2022.
All right, we probably shouldn't claim it again.
We said the CNN.
Good catch. So move those to.
I think you may.
Well, since there isn't any urgency on this, you know, and we do have three members missing it. We'll talk about it again next meeting. That's fine. People can think about it. In the meantime.
And do you remember, does this, is it, it's in the hall, right? Does it do that to the cities? I think it's left, we don't have the timeline yet.
She's putting it on my library website too.
Okay. Yeah. Books.
So next item is the FY23 NOBO budget request. And we had a useful discussion that last meeting. I apologize that my internet was flaky and I wasn't able to participate in all of that. But we've got a little bit of a revision to it. Also, Sue and just mentioned what, what revision is.
Yes. I removed the separate entry for the board recognition event that was valued at $1,500. I rolled that into the staff learning category. So I added that last sentence that reads, a leadership team retreat, including an informal session with the Board of Trustees. To recognize the efforts about going board members will be planned for late 2023. And just added the 1,500 to the, the value of that, that must have request. So that was the, the only change that was made to this part.
Yeah. No, the idea is we will, we will get together. It'll be at the end of the staff retreat. Yeah. Good with that? I don't think.
Just a very modest question about the OCLC being jettisoned, as I understand it. And a nonprofit company and replaced by a for-profit company. I think that Baker and Taylor is a for-profit. And so just in, we're given not a justification for that. And I'm, I'm not sure how important it is, but OCLC has been around for a long time. And I always thought it was a pretty useful search device. So I was wondering why it was being replaced and it's presumably costing us more money now. Maybe not.
I, I think it's sort of a reallocation. I don't know that I would say it costs more. I don't, Anne is not here to speak to it. I think she'll be the most informed. But I can, I can double check those details for you.
I can speak to what I know. I think the main intent there is to explore options, see what's out there and do it as kind of a pilot program. And see if it's going to be a tangible enough improvement over what we have right now. If it is, then we have another discussion on what that would mean.
So it's kind of a test drive.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I do specifically remember that Anne sent me a longer narrative that I could have been one of those documents.
But of course.
Summarized it, thinking that was a curmudgeon to the board. So I know that, I know that more information is readily available, so we can bring that to the next one.
All right. It's a, I'm not, this is not something I'm passionate about, but I'm just surprised because. OCLC is something that I admired for a long time. And it is on profit, so.
Yeah.
Anything else on the NOBO budget request? Uh, we do have to take action to approve the board's. Uh, motion to approve, second through John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, passes. Moves us on staff reports, starting with the director's report.
Happy to answer any questions. Just kind of gave an overview of our experience at the ALA conference in Chicago. An update on the city of Iowa City, the different education study. Tom was able to come to a presentation with the consultant about that. And I did attach the, the basic information document. And as you all know, the ALA president visited Iowa City, we were able to connect with her. And that last item, the intercultural development inventory opportunity was brought forward by Stephanie Bowers, who's equity director for the city. Um, and I wanted to make sure you got sort of the full, full opportunity and then could maybe make a decision about. Whether that would be something you'd want to participate in. Stephanie told me in our conversations about it that. The boards and commissions that have gone through it thus far have found it really valuable and, and worth the time investment. I also learned that if the board participates, then the library leadership team could do so as well. And we could just kind of, I'll get that check in about what could we work on strengthening? But it's optional.
Any questions or comments for Alsworth? And let's see, we've got. Adult community, start there. New reporter, yeah, that'll go.
Last year, I decided to make you a big graph. And write along two paragraphs, so. It's confusing or if you're. Couldn't make it through, maybe shorten it for you and Chris right now. And then just some photos of some really good programming that happened this summer. Team events happen every day. Victoria's hanging on by a thread. She has one more week and then save addition. And the adult day was the first time we offered that program. We saw a lot of younger twenty-somethings tenants asking for it borderly. That was really exciting because that's a population that we don't reach traditionally very well. Despite many, many attempts.
Can you quite get a, a picture in my head of what was going on in the information requests? I couldn't make a coherent picture out of that one. What's yours?
It's a funny thing because the way we track is the way, the questions that we ask mostly are what the state wants reports for, which is. Did somebody ask you a reference question where you had the user resource or knowledge of some sort to give them an answer? Or was this an internal, you know, your account question or your account or where's the badge or those are others? And so traditionally, every request for an interlibrary loan, for example, is considered a reference question. So it's a, it comes through to the staff. They read it, takes them about 60 seconds to verify that book and where is that book? Here's the request, so. It gets the same weight potentially in people's mind as, you know. My family member, it's, it's a hospital, it shouldn't appear in another state, oh yeah, so. So ref, ref, true reference question and other is always kind of a weird thing for me put in these reports because. Yeah, you'll see the percentage dropping 18%. It seems like doing, but it could just be partially that our library loans were down by a certain percent. Which would have a dramatic increase here or decrease. Also, post-COVID, everything shifted because the people that we immediately put into response for. What are the people who's answering all questions or in staff? Um, so live agent things, which is our, the way you contact it through the website. All those questions come to the reference desk staff. And a lot of them ended up being renewals, even though that traditionally was happening. So the others went up, the true reference things went down. So partly it's that, partly I think subsufficiency is just greater every year. Yeah. Chat GPT taking care of your phone. So we'll see what sorts of things we need. It sort of helps me to do this one because it shows me the kinds of things we're tracking, maybe aren't. We still need them for the reports, but maybe now we need to look at other things that we're tracking. We've talked about social services requesting a name, post the social worker.
Yeah.
So reaching out to a library for that. One of the social work students had designed a tracking tool for a library, so they'll be sharing them. Switchboard is like, you know, phone calls, just in general are down. Tried to give you stuff like national stats that show that people don't make phone calls anymore. But when I looked, phone calls are higher than. But I, I think that is more like. One, the industry wants to look really good, so they probably try things different too. But I also think. You want to call people that you won't call if you don't really want to call. Get something solved for you.
Right.
You want to call your friend and talk for.
Yeah.
And Page Station was one that was really interesting because we kind of have a two-part, two-pronged attack on the second floor of that Page Station. Sort of a holdover thing from a long, a long time ago when people get stuck. And traditionally, all the guest passes came from there before the COVID times. And when you go to a staff person and get access, then you tend to go back to that same staff person and get all of the access it just got.
Right.
So now that we do guest passes differently from all service points. We're seeing people just gravitate to the references, which is what we were in these months of the professions. We always had to train pages to kind of be like, get up to this point and then walk around and then get stabbed. But they're very smart people as well, and so. Tend to try to do what they learn. So we're seeing help work way differently at the Page Station. Um, but you can see like discussions, for example, it's still up.
Yeah.
And so they're still busy running around, just the allocation of work is just.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Is that library wide? Does that include the children's reference desk and reference questions and others?
I would count them all.
I'm just a child, an insolent child. I never count. Sorry, Jason, I didn't have it in front of me and I couldn't remember. Hey, maybe bring up your totals.
Oh, no, every, every desk had reference, yes.
Yeah.
Health desk. I just can't compare them for what I, what they, they end up spending. Coffee bills at some point. So it's going to be.
Right.
And I don't think that this veers away from national problems. I mean, you referenced that a little bit, but I, I think that what we've thought of as sort of true or hard reference. Right. Is, is listening and part of that is just. is, is listening and part of that is just the gatekeeping aspect of librarianship has shifted to trying to create that access. So I mean, you used to have to work with reference staff to do even sort of the basic genealogy tools that we have access to. And now those are much more public facing and accessible. And that's just one example. So I think um, these numbers can seem sort of surprising. But I, I think that, as Jason just said, it's really more of a reallocation of where things are happening. Because the busyness has not changed, but the, the, the tracking numbers have.
Right.
That's the next goal. It's like tracking is the, the time spent. Um, you know, like, for example, today I spent forty-five minutes with one person. We had a new phone. And so we answered like five reference questions together. So that's just a different way to try to get it better, figure out how to do it. Or, or not great at even clicking the number of questions that we just answered and you're just on to the next thing.
Sure.
So tracking that time spent is always coming. We'll see. Might just do lots of little samples and see extract.
Yeah.
The summary is then is for sure. Sort of curious to see.
Well, not to make this felt, but I agree with you. It is technically the reason which we've made circulation has given the transmoral those people references. So I think I have four ebook and ebook and app questions in one shift. And that was all I could do from the start. So I was glad the other person could serve. But yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I don't have any way to put our children into this conversation. I can already see Elzer.
Anything else for, for Jason?
Okay, regards are going well. Still, Victoria's out there twirling every morning.
I didn't know that for today.
Yeah. Actually, the worst part is someone there, there's a vandal.
I think the vandal.
Yeah, that's dripping out.
The tomato plants and the corn plants was coming.
What a threat of risk. And also the university was doing a study there, the device, not devices, obviously, as well. A lot of scientists that say these, these vegetables are eating those as for, it seems to help.
Yeah, we can do it. Uh, how about the, the community and access services departmental report? Any?
Now that it's all on to Jason's turn, I don't have anything to say. Um, I'm just really proud of my team and the combined efforts with all the other teams in the library in the last three months. We have hired and onboarded four new part-time permanent members of staff and we've been detailing a bit more, including a graphic designer. So I just appreciate the fact that we've kept on keeping on during a very busy time in our season and then the new collaborations that we're having with the university, but then also through the team department with Victoria and Jason to get into the Southeast Junior High. It's very exciting because this is the first time that the book home bill is intentionally going out to the teen tween market in a mindful way. Other than that, I'm delighted to be here above water, getting all our new staff ready to rock and roll. They can do, I miss anything. Well, Angie doesn't want to play. I didn't anticipate these numbers of virality and growing social marketing to continue. I thought it was cocoa bananas that we did it by three digits last year. Continue to grow because that's not the trend. And so joking aside, if Angie could have one contribution for her career, that does really help myself. Sometimes I think that's accounting for this year because we should have seen that kind of growth after last.
Yeah, half a million page impression just sounds crazy to me. Is it? That's a half million. So that's growth.
From the year before.
And so what's the base?
Um, so the base is eleven thousand users and I'd have to, I'd have to go back to it and look at the amount, but I kind of let Hootsuite tell me the numbers. Yeah. But I, I can get you something a little bit deeper next, because I'm excited to chat about.
Yeah, yeah, it just seems quite phenomenal. And a page impression, well, maybe if somebody clicked on the page.
Yes, and what's really delightful about the updates with Hootsuite is that we're going to be looking at the deeper data on how does that get us student count on, how does that get to the website? Because those click rates are fascinating ones. Driving the traffic.
Yeah, the ones through the coaches, yeah.
And that's one of the things when we talked about the Nobu budget, spending money on some digital kind of evaluation tools. Being able to look deeper into not only was it a click, but how long was spent and what was navigated in that. Were we helping?
Yes. Other questions or comments?
Got one point of curiosity and this is truly a point of curiosity. I'm interested. I know that we give out pre-bus passes and that's no longer going to be necessary. Interested in what change, if any, the pre-bus will have on our track.
So we've been trying to change the narrative from get your free passes here to read, write, ride and repeat. So like destination imagination, yeah, use those free passes to get to the library. We're working with the different city departments on video. We've updated all of our graphics. They can have a campaign that is just kind of ongoing the last couple of days. We don't want to get ahead of the transit department. This is, this is their thunder and kind of loud thunder, so I'll come after it. Great question. I don't know what we're going to do with those stampers though for the guest passes. I guess we'll have to go back to hand checking out all the books and.
Hang on, it's only funded for two years.
Hold on to it.
Fair free is only funded for two years, so.
I'll score them away.
And not surprisingly, feedback from library patrons about the, the fair free has been like people tearing up, kind of like when we went finally, sort of like this is
Right.
This is a really big deal and I'm, I'm so proud of the transit of the city for, for figuring out a way to do it for two years.
And in your package, there are a number of news articles. I don't know if anyone had any comments. Uh, next item on the agenda is President's Report and I want to briefly mention a few things. One is I did attend the eight-year consultants presentation because I have the honor and responsibility of signing off on Ellsworth's response to the questionnaire about his position, but just to make clear, this is something that large organizations have to do periodically to make sure the classifications work so that there's some internal equity, people who are doing the same work in different places or treating them the same way. And I have to say that I've sat through many such presentations and this one was quite painless. It gave me, gave me reasonable faith in the process, so. That was, that was useful. Um, Ellsworth and I had a discussion about the finance committee, which didn't resolve. But I'd like to give some thought to what the finance committee should look like, what it should do and just, I don't know that we want to throw open a discussion, but invite you, if you have thoughts about what a finance committee could do to make the board more effective, to share them with me. It's something that we've tried a little bit. Oh gosh, sporadically, it's not the word, word for it, but it, it's in fits and starts. So I mean sporadically, I think. And I'd like to figure out what we really should be doing there, if, if anything. So if, if you have thoughts, want to share those with me. And then getting back to the intercultural development inventory, that is a voluntary thing. I see it as an opportunity to to do it. If it seems like it's something, you know, some, a free development opportunity for you that you're interested in it. I encourage you to sign up for it. I don't think it makes sense to try to decide as a board if we're all doing it, so I'd like to do it. Please do. And that is my report. Are there any announcements from members? Foundation Committee Report? No, no, none. Many patients were in the packet. Which brings us to the consent agenda, which consists of approving the minutes and the disbursements. A motion to adopt the consent agenda? Thank you. And the second, I'll do the second. C J's second. Any discussions? I guess it's a consent agenda and that's what's asked for discussion. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then the end order for the August meeting, in August, we've got fourth quarter financials and statistics. The A policy review. The memorandum of agreement between the Friends Foundation and ourselves and then department reports. That will be a good meeting. Um, just before we adjourn, was there anything to add to that agenda?
Want to have annual.
Uh, sure, yeah, board of trustees annual report. Yeah, let's do that. Now we think we can finish that up next meeting. And then just quickly before we adjourn, this should have been my president's report. Um, I want to be explicit about something. When I've chaired in the past as vice chair, we've all joked about how quickly I finish meetings. And quick meetings are good, but I'm actually going to try to slow down a little bit and make sure that we have time to discuss things that need to be discussed. So if you, if you need to remind me of that, feel free to.
We can do that, so that's.
Yeah, whatever signals you, you think will work. I mean, okay, that said, there being more business before the board.
Could I actually?
Ellsworth would like to speak.
I was going to ask about the Johnson County.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So it turns out that we have a contract with Johnson County to provide library-wide services and that's referred to in our bylaws. And that contract and our bylaws are in conflict about what it takes to appoint a member to represent the county. And city legal's opinion is that the contract is the more binding of the two, which makes sense to me. And so the board supervisors says, yeah, Robin can serve on. But the city council hasn't been presented with that yet. So we expect that this will go through in August. And Robin will rejoin us as a representative for the county. And sometime pretty soon we will revise our bylaws to bring them in to.
The bylaws committee should have done their due diligence last year.
Yeah. Well, I gotta, I gotta admit, I said, look, it's right here in the bylaws and then later said, it references this contract that I have never seen, so.
It only comes up every six years. There's a reason that it always feels like a surprise.
Yeah, so we'll get the bylaws fixed and then next time around.
I'm a bit surprised. Robin seemed like she was ready to be done.
She did, but she is also. Also willing to serve, so. So that's a, yeah, that's a generous offer on this part. Absolutely. So. Yeah, really, we deserve it.
Eighteen years.
Now, the bylaws do allow trustees to resign. I mean, I she may not have to serve eighteen years. Yeah, or twenty-four years or whatever. That's it. Okay, that, that said, I think we've completed our business and I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.